To be able, in the absence of ordinances, to be able to tie up acreage within the watershed, not only with Mr. Ferguson, but with other developers at such, until we had ordinances in place to implement our watershed management plan. It became very, very apparent to me that the plant, the agreement that we had was not a very usable document, and in my mind certainly left some open holes for the protection of Lake Marmell. And so about, about three to four weeks ago, we decided to separate that part of the overall settlement, place that aside, and to go ahead and settle the lawsuit, pay the developer a million dollars, conserve 122 acres of the 301 acres and place into a protective easement, construct the diversion ditch, and to continue to negotiate with the developer to bring about an agreement that will tie up not only the 2,000 acres that that developer has an interest in, but also other acreage in the watershed. Each of you should have a packet of information that talks about the highlights of the settlement, as well as some frequently asked questions, and some maps that shows you what this diversion ditch would look like and where it is located. We believe that the settlement that was finally approved July 12th by the Board of Commissioners does three things. First of all, it does protect water quality. If designed properly, if constructed properly and maintained, it will divert the runoff outside of the watershed. Central Arkansas Water hired a third-party engineer, CH2M Hill, to review the plans, to review the concept, and they agreed that, in fact, it would work. We plan to retain not only their services during the construction of this project, but also another engineer's services for review of the project during construction. But first and foremost, it does divert the run, stormwater runoff from the, from the watershed. Secondly, we still are in active negotiations with the developer to tie up the additional 2,000 acres in the watershed for future development, meaning that our watershed management plan would be implemented. And then third, by paying the million dollars to the developer, which was an agreed-upon amount back last year between the two negotiating sides, we know that for a fixed cost that we will protect the watershed within Lake Marmell, and particularly the 301 acres. The benefit of this is widespread, but one of the concerns that we had was the unknown judgment that we could have if the condemnation continued and it went before jury trial. Not only would this potentially be a lengthy court battle, but also we have heard numbers from 10,000 an acre up to 20,000 an acre, which basically means that we would have roughly an additional, a little over $2 million, up to an additional $5 million. We believe that those monies, or a portion of those monies, are better spent looking throughout the watershed and providing additional water quality monitoring, updating our models, and making sure that land use practices throughout the watershed, which is 88,000 acres, is consistent with our goal to protect water quality. And it's our belief that this money can be not only better spent, but potentially can save the, the rate payer some, some additional costs.
Will Central Arkansas Water be responsible for the maintenance of the ditch?
Actually, there's a third party, either a special improvement district or a property owners association. However, we will have the right to inspect it at any time and require certain measures to be implemented to make sure that it's being maintained properly.
So financially, it will be the district and not the Central Arkansas Water that be responsible for the maintenance?
That is correct.
Questions?
This says that it'll, this ditch will handle up five to eight inches of rainfall per hour?
Yes, ma'am. The design storm is a 100-year storm plus 20 percent.
That's amazing.
And based on the formula and the time of concentration, it comes out to those parameters. So it's a rather intensive rain. And when you're talking about stormwater runoff from an area, so often you're talking about that initial flush of certain pollutants, whether it be fertilizer, dog waste, what have you. And so the goal is not only to capture that first flush, but also to capture a significant amount beyond that first flush and divert it outside of the watershed.
Okay, we have like a, a side map. How long is this? What's the length of this ditch?
The length of this is, I don't have the exact figure. It is four, 5,000 feet. It's a long ditch.
Ah, the concrete. Okay.
Any other questions? You're not asking us for any money?
No, sir, I am not.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That is all of our presentations. We're reconvening our public hearing a tad bit after 7:05 on the, on the noise control ordinance. I believe that's Alderwoman Robinson's the lead sponsor. Alderwoman Robinson, you want to again introduce it, or just open it up for comment?
Well, let's just open it up for comment.
All right. Anybody want to talk about noise?
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I have a, a couple of comments. I am in favor of noise controls, especially loud music, barking dogs, and that sort of thing, but I have a question or two. I haven't been here for a while. The home residential burglar alarms that are not monitored have devices that generate loud noises. Is that, is that in this ordinance? I mean, if, if a guy's alarm went off and he wasn't monitoring, it didn't get turned off for a couple of hours, is he going to get a ticket, or, or what do we, have we considered these things? Car alarms that go off, somebody breaks into my car, my alarm goes off, and, and it causes loud noises for a good spell of time and get complaints from a, from somebody. Has this been considered into these things, as emergencies, or what, what about this?
City Attorney, you got an answer?
Give him the minute. It's in there.
Well, there's a specific exemption for the intentional sounding of burglar alarms as far as testing goes, but there's no exemption for inadvertent setting it off.
Well, I don't know about inadvertent. I think we're talking about burdens setting it off.
If someone sets one off on purpose, or it, for an alarm that's set off based on a, based upon an emergency, there is an exception. On page five, subsection B1 provides an exception for emergencies.
Well, I think, I think breaking into your home would be a consideration.
That would be an emergency.
Okay, so the answer is...
That would be covered by the emergency situations, such as car alarms also?
I'd say...
It would still be an emergency if somebody's breaking into it. I mean, if somebody just inadvertently set off their alarm themselves and then just walked away and let it run, that would not be provided in ex, in exemption.
Right. Okay, I guess that covers my questions, but like I say, I have alarm systems on my stuff that are not monitored. Some of it's not monitored and some of it is, but I guarantee you, if it goes off, somebody will hear it for a long time.
Well, one of the things, and, and I don't think, you know, I mean, I, I don't know that, that any of us probably could cite this page for page, paragraph for paragraph, sentence for sentence. But, but again, you know, I know that we meet twice a month, and we can meet a special, on a special call, and that if some, if this should be adopted and some unknown consequences occur, then, then as you know, Mr. Reynolds, this council is a very appropriate body to deal with unforeseen consequences of its acts.
So you're saying if there is a problem, we could fix it?
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is thinking of a mayor, council?
Yeah, one of the things, and let me just mention this before we state your name, and I know that Ms. Whitby and I have been discussing, you know, sometimes she has difficulty in spelling and understanding pronunciation in terms of the minutes. We're not going to do it this time, but in the future, we're certainly going to keep the opening in terms of the microphone, but we're going to ask you put your name, write your name, print it, and address, and how we might contact you, so that we'll have a better record of how we can reflect who comes to the microphone. And obviously, if some of you are regular, we don't need to do that every time, but we, we certainly need to do that for those who aren't regular. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Glenn Miller. I live in Second Ward. And my friend John Parker was asking me about this, and I have, my educational background is in environmental health science and industrial hygiene, and I've worked for several companies working on noise abatement and industrial hearing and industrial noise. And I went over this and was looking at this, and then did some research on, online to a lot of other cities. And I've got a few questions about this. I'm like everyone else. I don't like a lot of noise around my house. But there's a few things in here that bother me in looking at other cities that have had these and lawsuits they've enjoyed by having these. I want to make sure our city doesn't get in trouble by missing out on some things. One of the things, having worked noise a lot, my professional wife, was this, all measurements should be made with a sound meter in its fast or peak level setting. Mostly in the industrial world, we use, we use a time-weighted average. That way you get a normal, what, what's happening often. If you use a peak setting, if you're out weed-eating your yard or running an edger and you hit a rock, it's going to have a high peak. It's not there often, it's not there always, but it's a peak. And what I'm mostly concerned with after reading this is, we're not getting rid of the nuisance noise, the noises that really bother us. What I'm worried about is we're giving an angry neighbor a club to beat us up with. Because if you get out there with a leaf blower, you're going to be right on the edge of breaking the, the ordinance. And I don't know if that's the best thing in the world. Also, I didn't, there's a lot of, after reading a lot of these other city ordinance, I noticed they had a lot of exemptions for a lot of different things that I didn't see in here. One of them had to do with First Amendment. There's some churches that, when they get together on Sunday, they raise a joyful noise to the Lord, and it's pretty loud. I want to make sure we don't have people getting mad at church next door, because I have one, and they have these outside revivals, and they get loud. Now, there's nothing in here covering that, and I want to make sure we don't get into a First Amendment argument with somebody. We've got an election season coming up. I'm pretty, I like politics. I might have a left-wing rally going to my house or a right-wing rally. Chances are, if I have one, I'm going to make somebody mad. I want to make sure I'm not called, have the police show up at my door because we're having a political get-together. That's exposing the city to litigation on First Amendment. Another thing that really bothers me is, we make a law, we give all these angry neighbors a great club to beat us up with, and now we've got all these police officers out here that are already carrying like 30 pounds of gear. Now we've got to hand them another piece of equipment that they've got to be trained on, they've got to be certified to use, they've got to carry around with them, and they're going to have to go out there and answer all these calls, and they've got to measure out 30 feet from the property line, take the reading. To me, those cops should be out there protecting us from people we're afraid of, the murderers, the rapists. We've got people shooting each other in the Walmart parking lot. I don't want to think that this cop's out because this neighbor's mad at his other neighbor for making a lot of noise. I'm not saying we don't need a noise ordinance. I'm saying we need to make sure that it's really well thought out, because I've, I've read a lot of them, and I've seen lawsuits that have gone against a lot of cities, and I think that's what expensive city doesn't need. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. My concern about this is the same as it was to start with. And the most of it was, it was not weed eating, people mowing grass, something that made sense, or even putting a roof on their house. I could stand that to 1, 2 o'clock in the night, because that's accomplishing something. But these loud radios that they pull up in front of your house, or the next-door neighbors, and they get out and they go in, they leave the car sitting outside, or across the street, or they sit out there and they blow the horn till people comes out, and then they open the door and go up and sit on the porch and talk to them, and you can hear them in the house hollering because they have to talk so loud over the radio. We're not complaining about people laughing, cutting up, and having a, a good time, but when they start getting so loud that you can have to keep turning your TV up in your house before you can enjoy it, or on a Sunday evening when, when you want to rest, and this stuff like this starts, that is what I'm talking about, and I still would like to have this ordinance passed, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Microphone's still open. Yes, sir?
Hello, council, mayor. My name is Larry Settles, and I'm new to North Little Rock. I moved here last January from Sacramento, California, and I'm one of the millions of folks that's finally coming back home.
We're glad you're here.
Well, thank you very much. I live in the Third Ward, and the noise that I'm concerned with is the Union Pacific Railroad, and how they blow their horn across the crossings, and when they start to blow their horn. Now, I've noticed that some engineers have some respect for the neighborhood, and they don't lean on the horn. They don't lay on it like it's, uh, uh, somebody's on the crossing. I think we ought to look at the noise that's created by these railroads, not just the rumbling through the neighborhood of the boxcars and whatnot. I've lived next to railroads, but it's the engineers and how they approach the crossing, how many feet before they get to the crossing where they start to lean on the horn. They don't need to lean on the horn starting a half a mile away and continue after they cross the crossing. And I, I've just, you know, I said, well, maybe I should record this, because I think it's just something we ought to say to the Union Pacific about how they come through the neighborhood. Now, I did purchase a home in North Little Rock, so I'm concerned about our property values also. So I, I'm really deeply concerned about a noise bill to, whether it's cars or whoever's the, the person that's, that's doing the noise. But I think we ought to be considerate of each other as we come to those crossings. And, and I don't know how many people have been struck by a train there, but if, if it's been a problem, I think we ought to, uh, uh, ask the Union Pacific to put up gates or, or some kind of warning device or something like that. I mean, after all, they are benefiting from free...
Let, let me just give a quick summary. Alderman John Parker, who is one of your two council members, has taken the lead on this issue. The, the bit of the problem with this issue is this is federal. This ordinance wouldn't help us a whole lot with the problem you're describing.
Well, the town I grew up in, Robbins, there was the Rock Island Railroad, and they came through our town speeding. So our policeman boarded the train at the town before them and arrested those engineers at their next stop and brought them back to town. Because they had to stand before our judges. But I understand federal and all this, but they're still on our land, and we as the citizens gave them the right for that easement out there.
Let me take it, the next step. The next step is, you know, and this is the second year we've done this, we've put $150,000 in our budget. There is an opportunity, yet we should construct certain types of crossings that they will not blow the whistle in going across those crossings with that in place. Now, the problem, but the problem is, is that we got to pay for it. They aren't mandated to pay for it. And while we, you know, while $150,000 may not be total, it may be part if we are able to perhaps eliminate a crossing, and so we'll have two crossings taken care of. Now, we can look at the regulations, and I know I was a former fireman for the railroad, and they are mandated to blow, blow that whistle by federal law until they pass through the crossing. And yet I do agree, probably some of them lay on it harder than others do. So we can work with them in one instance, but in the second instance, Alderman Parker has really made this a personal, and we, in fact, we talked about it earlier today. I talked about it with Alderwoman Ross last week. So we're going to make an effort to try to, and have set money side to do that, and our, our traffic services department is currently undertaking a study about recommending if we eliminated one crossing, which would then eliminate the need for any noise at all going through a crossing, you know, which one should that be if one, and then if we signalize one with railroad, then that may be two this year. But that is a, an, an effort and a concern, and we're going to have to work within federal laws in order to move in that direction. But we're sensitive to what you're saying, and you've got at least two council members, I'm sure many more, who are supporting that effort.
All right, thank you very much.
And thank you for being here. Microphone's still open. All right, I'm going to, Alderwoman, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the public hearing, and then now we are back to the council. If we want to bring this up at this point, that's certainly all right with me, Alderwoman. And then, do you have something before that, Alderwoman?
I had a question.
Okay.
I, I know that some people have read the articles on it, and they're a little bit concerned that we're going to measure from the, the source of the complaint to the, to the loud noise. Now, I have had some elderly people say that they won't call in because they don't want the neighbors, as someone had mentioned there, to be really unhappy with them that they've made that complaint. And I was hoping that we might have it so that you'd take the, the noise and then, uh, the distance from the noise, you could find them if it was in violation, rather than, and go in, let's say that, that you live at 125 East Washington, and they come out, they'd go to 125 East Washington, and then, and then go over to where the, uh, the noise is. And those people would be afraid to call because they're afraid that they would, that they'd have people so mad at them that they would do damage to their property.
And the, Alderman Thomas, the reason why it's set up the way that it is, is because what we're trying to do is to keep people from being disturbed in their homes.
I know.
And, and right now, I think it, we've, we've got a 70 decibel limit inside somebody's house, which is a pretty loud noise. 70 decibels is a pretty loud noise. So that even if, if you were my neighbor and you were creating a noise, such as the police came to my house and they measured inside my house, and it, and you are creating noise at a 70 decibels inside my house, then as a neighbor, you got to know you are, you are seriously disturbing my peace and comfort. And, and I think that, that they would be able to communicate to each other as neighbors. Now, there may be people, you know, a few folks out there in society who, they don't care whether or not they're creating noise to someone else, you know, that's interfering with someone else's home, and, and there's not really anything that we can do with folks like that besides prosecute them.
The one example they gave me, that they were neighbors on either side, and they had their doors open and loud music washing their car, but it's that the lady was afraid, she's afraid to call. She's afraid to call in and complain. So that's one of the problems that, that I have with that, even though that I really do support the ordinance, but I, I can see their concern.
One of the things that, and again, this is just on the enforcement side of it. I know that code, as well as the police department, will have some opportunities to be involved in enforcement, should this be adopted. You know, you know, let me again repeat what I said a little earlier, and that is that, you know, it's hard for me to sit here. I didn't have the opportunity to listen to the test that went on, but at the same time, you know, we're not going to send out the noise police, you know, should this be adopted. You know, this is not, and will not be, high on our priority on patrol. You know, what will be done, as far as I and the code, as well as the police department, will be reacting again to complaints. And to me, you know, if this should be adopted, it'll give us, and Mr. City Attorney, you can comment on this, give us a clear definition of, of what is prosecutable. And we're not going to be going after, you know, political debates. We're not going to be going after, you know, gray areas in terms of, of what is any potential violation, or, you know, the city attorney and I will obviously continue in consultation if this is adopted, and we're not going to stick our neck out. And I don't mean to say that, again, we're going to be out there with noise meters driving up and down residential streets. This will be complaint-driven. It'll be a way for us to, to determine whether or not it is actually a violation, and, and again, it will be an opportunity, I think, more, in more regard, Alderman Thomas, to be able to keep neighbors out of neighbors', you know, sight of fire, and so, and so to speak, because we'll be able to actually have some way to prove in a reactionary way that there is a violation of that. But again, I mean, this is, this would be new to us, and, and, and rest assured, it's a, it's a quality of life issue. You know, it's certainly not a life or death issue.
And the only other comment that I'd, I'd make on that, Alderman Thomas, is oftentimes we get the same kind of thing about barking dogs, dogs that continuously bark, and that's in violation of our ordinance. And sometimes we get neighbors who, they want the dog to be quiet, they're concerned about aggravating their neighbor. And, and of course, if we don't have somebody to testify, we can't go forward with the prosecutable case, but that doesn't stop one of our animal control officers or one of the police officers from going by and saying, hey, some of your neighbors called, they don't want to make you mad, but your dog's barking and keeping them up, and could you please keep that down? And then, you know, good neighbors tend to get along that way.
I'm for it.
We're trying to keep good neighbors, good neighbors. What do they say, big fences build good neighbors? Well, you know, lack of noise will certainly go in that direction, too.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Ross?
Well, I think we all received probably the same email on generators. Did you get one that, the email also?
I did. At one point, I did receive an email on generators.
I didn't really understand what they meant about the generators, but they were afraid that their generator would be in violation of the noise ordinance.
You know, I mean, I, not having heard it...
I don't know anything about generators. That's the only thing, I don't know.
But, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, let me just say, if we had an ice storm and everybody fired up their generators, rest assured, we're not going after generators.
Right. Well, it was something about keeping the generator charged up.
Well, they have to test it, very often.
Okay, that's what it is, the testing then. Okay.
Well, I think if, if we have an ice storm or some kind of event that's caused everybody to lose power and they're turning generators on, that's an emergency situation, which is accounted for in the ordinance. If people are just running temporarily, testing their generators, I'd see that that's a transient sound, just like any other piece of equipment that you run. It's set by the higher decibel levels, you know, it's temporary, it'll go on for a while, it'll turn off. And right now, I think the daytime limits which are set on that would be in a residential zone during daytime hours. That's a 70 decibel limit with additional 30 decibels.
So it's 100.
For 100 decibels from 30 feet away.
It's 30 feet.
That's a pretty loud noise. Those pieces of equipment are required to have mufflers on them.
We can always amend it.
100.
Okay. If we come back and we say we can amend it.
Uh, we don't have anything before, so before we get into discussion, you know, we've just finished the public hearing, so let, let's see if, and I assume Alderwoman Robinson is going to bring this before, so without objection, let me ask Alderwoman Ross, do you want us to go ahead, Ross? Alderwoman Robinson, do you want us to go ahead and call this piece of legislation?
Please.
All right. With that, Ms. Whitby?
This is an ordinance amended in North Little Rock Municipal Code to include a chapter on noise control. Third and final reading is amended.
Move for adoption. There a second?
Second.
Now we're under discussion. Alderman Hyde?
There was a gentleman here at the last council meeting that said that his motorcycle came from the factory that had a decibel level that was just slightly higher than the limits that we had set in this ordinance. Have we addressed that issue?
Alderman Hyde, I think the point that was raised there was, yes, it was, his motorcycle was slightly higher than decibel limits.
And it came from the factory.
From right next to it, from 30 feet away.
I asked you how you, how he measured, how it was measured, and anyway, I just, does this ordinance address his concern?
It, it has not been modified. Since that concern was raised, it's not been modified, but I don't think that there was ever an answer presented to what his motorcycle would register at 30 feet away, which, you know, there's speculation that it would probably be substantially less than...
So his motorcycle then would be compliant?
It would be.
Yeah, assuming he doesn't have it revved up to the high degree and just sits there on it for a while. I mean, so, you know, we got to temper all this with, you know, with recognizing that this is going to be complaint-driven, and somebody's going to have to be trying to abuse it before, you know, we're going to be out on patrol. Again, we're all, we're in the discussion. There's a motion second for adoption. Any other discussion?
I've got some concerns and questions about noise. Sound is... Sound, has this legislation been tested or tried in any other communities in our state? Do we know what the fallout potential may be, or are we just kind of, the new frontier of trying to legislate sound? What's offensive to one may not be so offensive to others. Obviously, the people making the sound aren't offended by it. So, are we going to, it just seems to me that we all agree that anyone who is offending the norm of society should be, you know, that should be addressed. It should be deemed illegal, you know, and punished. No one should be allowed to abuse their neighbors individually or collectively, but we're all sitting here thinking of all of the exceptions to this, whether it be the Fourth of July fireworks, or the New Year celebrations, or whatever. Everybody's got their own little personal exception to the noise rule, all the way from a manufacturer's decibel level of, and Lord knows, I bet no one here, other than maybe a very few, knows even what a decibel is. And certainly, trying to somehow implement this law, once it's established, is gonna be nothing short of horrific. We think it's difficult now to prosecute someone for speeding violations when they're going five miles over the speed limit. What are we gonna do when it comes to running your decibels five decibels too high, or 10, or what have you? And who's going to show up in court to defend these allegations of wrongdoing? Are we gonna have police officers in court stating that they were on the premises of Joe Blow at a certain time, and his decibel level was at such and such a thing, and he sustained this noise level even after being warned for what have you? I mean, it's just, it just seems almost to the point of being ridiculous what we're trying to do here, because it's unprecedented. I don't know of any other place where you, maybe there is, Fayetteville, Arkansas, or you tell me.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of cities out there, and just in Arkansas alone, not even to mention, but across the country, but there's a lot of cities in Arkansas that have noise ordinances. When we were doing our research, we found that Fayetteville seemed to be, if anything, the most contentious, that they've had this, had their sound legislation for over 10 years. There were vested parties on both sides, those who are generating sounds and those who want to be protected by it. And that's usually when you have two very contentious parties with a piece of legislation that's gone over a long period of time, they find a good point of settlement, because they're both highly interested in finding a good legislative point to settle on. And so, that's the point from which we started. I would like to think that my legal abilities and creative mind could produce all of this just off the top of my head, but I can't really claim fame to that.
So, this document, this volumes of legal material here is not only just a paragraph, but it's a time-tested, 10-year working document that Fayetteville has come to...
Absolutely, and it's been amended several times in Fayetteville, because they hit decibel levels that didn't work, and I think what we've attempted to do with testing outside and especially with Alderwoman Ross's amendments, were to get a starting point for the city in North Little Rock that makes more sense for our city, not necessarily for Fayetteville, but for our city. That was the attempt.
So, we're just trying to implement something that's been tested and proven to be effective in other areas, and we've increased the decibel levels, even though I personally think it's gonna be impossible to enforce, but we'll see.
Alderwoman Ross?
Well, my question for Alderman Parker is, what do we do? Just don't try anything? Just up our hands and say nothing can be done?
What have we done in the past, is my question, back to you. What, how we've managed to get through the eons of our existence and humanity with these disturbances?
Well, evidently, everybody's...
You've heard the terminology, disturbing the peace. What, do we have anything on the books now for disturbing the peace?
There isn't.
Well, one of, I'm sorry, one of the things about disturbing the peace is that it's, you know, obviously, it would require somebody to have been disturbed, and it would require that person to testify in court, which really goes a long way, as Alderman Thomas said, in Making Good Neighbors, when you testify against each other in court. You know, to me, this would give perhaps more of an opportunity for someone to anonymously be able to have a complaint addressed. You know, I know there's a lot of concern about the unknown, but rest assured, should this be adopted, you know, we are going to temper the enforcement into applying it to situations that at least the police, the neighbors, and others feel are truly offensive. This is, you know, please don't think that there is gonna be a wholesale task force to go out and start trying to run around the city with decibel meters. It's not. You know, there's really not. And again, if there should, it should be adopted and we try it out and find it to be offensive, we're gonna hear about it, rest assured, and we can address that. So, you know, I mean, I, you know, to me, and I'm not speaking for or against it, it may sound like I'm speaking for it, but, you know, don't, you know, we're not gonna charge out like the cavalry and start, you know, going up and down the streets again. It's gonna be tempered with trying to address truly offensive noise problems.
Agreed. We can move to adopt. I'm ready to move forward.
Any other discussion, any other questions, any other comments? Motion made and seconded. On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Bryant?
Yes.
Let me make sure there is an emergency. Yes, there is. Bryant, Ross, Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Wadley, you know, we're gonna sit down and sort of visit a little bit about how we're gonna, you know, address this in a sensible and reasonable way without creating the noise cavalry. Now, that's not gonna happen. Next item, we're on Alderman Witcher's legislation on the current, reconvening the public hearing concerning mobile storage containers. Alderman Witcher, you want to introduce this?
Yep.
All right, introduce it.
Basically, you know, this is an ordinance dealing with the time periods that mobile storage containers can be left, and it's really zeroed in on commercial and industrial areas. We have a couple retailers that use mobile containers a great deal, and this'll limit the time period that they can use them, so...
Any, I'm sorry, Alderman Gaines, before we open this up?
I just want a quick question. Is your grandfather in, the ones that already have them?
No.
You gonna make them move theirs out?
Well, it's temporary, that storage containers.
Well, temporary could be one to three years.
Well, not by this ordinance.
All right. The microphone's open. I don't remember a lot of testimony on this, Alderman Witcher, but anyone here who wants to talk about mobile storage containers and the temporary nature thereof are about to become more temporary. Going once, going twice, adjourned.
Can we call it, Mayor?
Sure.
I have a question.
This is an ordinance amended section 12.22, mobile storage containers of ordinance number 7697, disowning ordinance declaring emergency.
Move for adoption.
There's a second?
Second.
Question, comment, rather?
Good question.
I had a question, Mayor. I know there was discussion at our last meeting about a possible amendment to subsection B4, because in subsection A4, it specifies that the permit would be a no-fee permit, and that's, that same provision is not stated in subsection B4, and I just wanted clarification for us where that would be, where the city has authorized to charge a fee permit or is not, if that's gonna be a no-fee, and I would ask for an amendment.
I was about to make that suggestion.
I think that's the intent of the drafter, that no-fee be charged. Mr. Voels, do you have anything, just to make sure that we don't do something we want to clarify?
Yes, there's been a, last time, they said they did want a fee on this, and we suggested amending that to a $15 fee. There's also been a little discussion...
Who wanted the fee of $15?
The councilmembers here. Someone brought it up at the last council meeting that it should have been a fee.
Had a question whether there was a fee.
We went back and asked the commission, and they said it should be a fee, and so we're asking that it be added.
Planning commission?
Yes. The second point is, we're listing this in both commercial and industrial. This came up because of the large containers that are being now used by some restaurants in some of the commercial areas, and I've asked the question whether it might be difficult to enforce this in industrial areas, such as ABF has some containers that they use all the time in their business, and that might be problematic in industrial areas. Didn't want, know if anyone might want to entertain that.
You know, whatever the council wants to do, Mayor.
Whatever we think is the most reasonable for us to do. If we want to exempt industrial areas, is that what you're suggesting? I'd certainly leave it up to the sponsor as to whether that's something that would be appropriate. Just a second.
At this point, I just think try industrial areas, and if it does not work, then come back, come back later.
All right.
I also would not like to have a fee.
All right, decision's made, at least on the author. Any other member of the council obviously has a right to move to amend Alderwoman Ross's...
I just think that under B4, we need to put that there's no fee. That was the one under B4, that was the question, because under residential...
I second that amendment.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, what did we do, just, where do you want to, where do you want to clarify that?
I'd like for subsection B4 to read a no-fer, a no-permit. Let me try that again. A no-fee permit shall be required, and that sentence will complete as written. Just to insert the words "no-fee" before permit in subsection B4 on the second page.
That motion is made by Alderwoman Ross and Sa...